Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 7th Los Gatos Town Council Meeting. Can we get a roll call, please?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Sayoc.
Here.
Councilmember Rennie.
Here.
Councilmember Specter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jensen.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Leonardi.
Here. I'd like to welcome up Sachin Ponchaloy. And we'll share a few words with you about Sachin. Sachin is a first grader at Louise Van Meter School. His favorite subjects are math and science. His favorite activities are playing baseball, soccer, tennis, and learning to play the piano. He loves to travel and take long flights. And most people don't like long flights. But the places he's been in his young age, Machu Picchu in Peru, Taj Mahal in India, and recently, the pyramids in Egypt.
That's in Giza, right?
Giza, Egypt. For his community service, Sachin likes to help pick up trash around the school to help keep the school clean. And we can all use a little bit of that on occasion in our community. So, thank you, Sachin, for all your work. And let's have you lead us in the pledge.
Now?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. That was wonderful. Can you go shake hands over here with these councilmembers? Let's give a big round of applause for Sachin. Thank you for coming in this evening. Next is our Small Business Big Applause Award. I would like to invite the Purple Onion forward. We are so pleased to have you as members of our business community. I walked in there the other day. It was very busy. People love your business. You have two locations in town. And it's one of those places that we were pleased to have you in our community. If you'd like to share a few words with us?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Lisa, my partner and I try to put the best cafe we can out there every day. And we appreciate being acknowledged for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a commendation for you. Hope you will hang it proudly in your, one of your locations.
Yeah, absolutely.
A big round of applause for the Purple Onion. Many happy returns to their business in our community. Many happy returns. We have three commendations I'd like to present this evening. On behalf of our fantastic employees and staff of the town, we have what's called Building Safety Month, National Public Works Week, and Municipal Clerks Week. And I'd like to invite Robert Gray, Mr. Matt Morley, and Shelley Neese to come forward. In the town of Los Gatos, we cherish our employees. We cherish their efforts that they put forth to keep this community served well with a smile and friendly service. Thank you so much. It's nice to be recognized formally. And here are your commendations. We have, for the clerks, we have Linda and Michelle as well. This is for public works. Building safety. We will shake your hands, of course, and get a photo.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Linda. And thank you, Michelle. All right. Please, thank you. Next up is our consent calendar. Does a member of council wish to pull anything from consent this evening? I see no hands. Is anyone in the audience wanting to pull an item from our consent calendar, which consists of items one through nine? I see none. Can I get a vote? Vice Mayor.
I approve the consent calendar consisting of items one through nine.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. It passes unanimously. Going on to verbal communications. These are four items which are not on our regular agenda. And I have three cards. So, if those individuals can come forward at this time, if you'd like to speak on anything, please fill out one of these cards. The first speaker is Vicky Hizanga.
So, I was here a couple of months ago talking about the Mills Act for historic preservation here in Los Gatos. And I came back the next month and didn't make it to this meeting last month. And I just came thinking that maybe there would be an update or I could hear if there's been any progress or anything on that front. And that was it. Just wanted a little reminder.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hizanga. I'm sure we will get you an update at the end of these communications. Mr. Jeff Siegel.
Good evening. So, I was here also with Vicky a couple of months ago to originally raise the topic of the Mills Act and the benefits that it would have to our town. And since that time, I've been actually trying to do a deeper dive on it and learn a whole lot more about it. And it was remarkable to learn that it was originally conceived by Senator Mills, who the act is named after, in 1972 in his effort to help save the Hotel del Coronado, which I suspect most of us are familiar with, maybe even have visited before. And the reason why that was so necessary is because historic homes, by their very nature, are so much more expensive to maintain and preserve. And at times, it could be onerous for, you know, the owners to be able to have the funds to essentially be able to do that. Yet, it's very much a part of the rich legacy and cultural heritage of our state. So, in 1972, Senator Mills was able to get that law, you know, that act passed. And at the time, Governor Reagan signed it. And it became, you know, a formal way for the state of California to say, "We, the state, have enough, place enough value on our historic heritage that we will fund or help co-fund the efforts to preserve these important monuments." And since then, I also learned that there are nearly 100 cities and towns throughout the state of California that have adopted it. Everything from, you know, large communities like San Francisco, LA, San Diego, Sacramento, and the like. But also, a very large number of towns, you know, of our size, quite frankly. So, these towns have benefited from the ability to tap into these funds that the state has offered to make their communities better, to really make their historical structures be part of the gems of their community. And we've all probably, you know, walked down the streets, you know, in Palo Alto and just seen how spectacular these residents can be when they are, you know, in their prime condition, the beauty of what they were originally created in. So, I just want to invite the town council to join Vicky and I on our journey to really help to, you know, evangelize this act getting adopted here in our town and us being able to benefit from that. And to see our historic, you know, district and other homes really become even more restored to their original luster and become part of, you know, the gem of Los Gatos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. And I would like to have our staff address the speaker's comments. What is the status of the pursuit of their request for the Mills Act?
So, the Mills Act in and of itself was not a council priority back in January. It wasn't on the ordinance list. And it wasn't, even though the speakers did speak at that, it was not brought up. So, staff doesn't consider it a priority. That being said, the mayor didn't want to schedule this for a meeting. Unfortunately, we can't schedule that until we resolve the conflict of interest issues of four of the council members. So, I'm working through that analysis. I'm pretty much have wrapped that up. And then, I've got to present that to the FPPC, which will then do a ruling on it. We will be able to hear it one way or another. Probably at the end game, there'll be some of you that will have to draw straws to come back in so that we do have a majority that can hear it. I would say that it'll be sometime in the fall that council would be able to hear the item.
We have a question from Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the issue currently before the FPPC? And if so, what do you anticipate their timeframe to be?
No, it's not. It's still within mine. You have to give them the complete analysis of that, which I had to go through, not only the first step, but then whether there's a public exception step. And then whether, how you then re-appellidate to allow someone to come back in. So, it's still on my table. It hasn't even been introduced to there. I've got a pretty good draft done. I should be done with that soon. I figure after, we should hear sometime in the summer from the FPPC. They're 30 to 45 days out. And then, so I think in the fall, you'll be ready, at least for the initial conversation. I don't intend to bring an ordinance for adoption, but at least you'll be able to have the first conversation. And it will only involve three of you at that time. There'll be two of you that won't be able to hear the item.
All right. Thank you. Maria Risto.
Hi, Maria Risto, 85 Broadway. I'm here to remind the council and everybody watching the meeting at home or here that May is Bike Month. And this week, we have two exciting events. On behalf of Safe Routes to School, Wednesday is Bike to School Day. There's activity at all the schools. A group of people will be there to welcome the high schoolers who are riding their bikes. We have Bike to Breakfast. So, right next to the bike racks, we'll be handing out snacks and thank yous to everybody who's taking one car off the road. Blossom Hill will have the Honeybee Bar Code and a raffle. Van Meter has a raffle, and Zippy will be making an appearance there. That's our mascot, who's shown riding a bike with a helmet there. Zippy also scooters and walks and rides the bus. And car pools. And Dave's Avenue had Earth Day about two weeks ago. And they're moving their Bike to School Day to Thursday. And they've actually invited the Monte Serrano Mayor, Ruena, will be there. And their new council member, Daniel Labouf. So, they've got activities there. Moving on to the next day. Thursday's Bike to Work Day. So, parents, if you bike with your kids on Wednesday, keep that bike out, and you can bike to work on Thursday. Silicon Valley Bike Coalition sponsors this event. And we've got two Energizer stations in the town of Los Gatos. The one on Blossom Hill Road across from the entry to Visona Station, or Visona County Park, is sponsored by our town, by our BPAC, the Rotary. And Supervisor Wasserman will have swag there and some information. So, get out your bikes. Enjoy the fresh air. Enjoy the infrastructure we've been putting in. And for those of you who do bike to work, there are two Bike Away From Work Bashes that if you're working in those areas on the way home, you can stop and enjoy a nice reward. In Sunnyvale, there's the Bike Away From Work Bash at LinkedIn. So, you're welcome to come there. Members or non-members of Silicon Valley Bike Coalition, there'll be beer, food, all kinds of fun. And if you're working in the Palo Alto area, Summit Bikes in Palo Alto will be hosting that Bike Away From Work Bash. So, let's try and get some more bikers from Los Gatos, and maybe we can host a Bike Away From Work Bash here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That concludes verbal communications. We'll move on to other business with item number 10, which is provide direction on potential amendments to the town's news rack regulations. We have Mr. Paulson delivering the staff report.
Yeah, thank you. Just briefly, the town council adopted revised news rack amendments in 2011. The mayor is interested in having the council have a discussion regarding potential amendments to that or expansion of that. Part of the amendments that were done in 2011 was a special news rack district was created, but that was limited to the C2 Central Business District downtown area. And so, staff's here to answer questions and look forward to the discussion.
All right. Thank you very much, council. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know which staff person, but in looking at the resolution or ordinance that we previously approved on the last page, 11 of 11, it references not only the downtown, but districts throughout town, throughout the town, or news racks throughout the town. And so, does this already apply to everybody?
So, news racks are regulated throughout the town, but there's a special district and special requirements in the downtown district. And so, whether or not we want to expand that or just look at enforcing the current rules, there's a number of options moving forward, depending on which way the council would like to go. And Mr. Schultz, I think, has some additional input.
And I think, maybe Joel will correct me. I think the big difference between the downtown and elsewhere is, is so anywhere you want to do a newspaper rack, you need to have a business license and you need to have a newspaper rack permit. So, you need those two, no matter what. In the downtown area, what we did is we actually physically put in those news racks and said, "This is where you have to put them." Where outside of the downtown area, they pretty much can put them anywhere, but they still need to have that business license and the newspaper, news rack permit.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
But as I'm reading this, and that's what I need the input for on, as I read this, it's saying that all of the conditions of the ordinance slash resolution apply except affixing to the sidewalk. But everything else applies. And so, is that accurate? Because some of the things that are brought up in the staff report are things that would be encompassed within the current ordinance. Or I should say, concerns.
So, I think there are a number of these that apply across the board. And then, if you look at page five, which gets into section 23.70.035, the special news rack district, there was an exhibit that showed where those racks could go, as Mr. Schultz mentioned. There is in B, speaking to the unique character of the downtown, that the town's going to install the racks. And then, there's three, which is using the special racks, which the town purchased, is mandatory, which outside of the district, it is not mandatory.
Councilmember Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the way I read it, if we're expanding the special district, that really the only difference is now the town is going to go install racks. Well, I guess wherever we're going to make them only be where our racks are. So, the first question would be, what would be the cost of doing that? And I guess you don't know, because you don't know how far we're expanding it?
So, that would be a discussion if the council is interested in expanding that. We would come back with additional information, including costs. I will thumb through, I think I have the old report, which in 2011 gave the cost for the racks. But the other thing was, at that time, the actual providers who used those and got permits, I believe, paid for those racks. But I will double-check that.
Follow-up question. I'm also trying to understand, you know, again, is there a problem we're trying to solve? Or the number of news racks expanding? Or, I mean, why is this coming up? I'm not quite understanding that.
So, I defer to the mayor. He asked that this be placed on the agenda. So, that's why we're here tonight, to decide whether or not, we think it needs to be expanded or modified or considered for amendment.
Okay. I'm sure he'll tell us. Thanks.
Vice Mayor.
Since the agenda item is that we are providing direction, let's give my direction, which is, first, I think that we should not be in the business of regulating when and where news and First Amendment free speech and press is distributed in our town. I realize that we already have an ordinance. I realize that we can do reasonable regulation, but additional regulation, I am not in favor of. Secondly, sadly, the news rack is a dying breed. I bet most of you out here for high school never pick up a newspaper. You get it on your phone. So, having a news rack, I think, is going to be a problem that solves itself sooner rather than later. And finally, all the work we're doing on our sidewalks, outdoor seating, streetscape, infrastructure, to make it mandatory to install a fixture on a sidewalk that we want, may want to use for another purpose, I think, is just a bad idea, given our various policy directions to be flexible in our downtown and throughout town.
Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, we will move to the public hearing. I do not have any cards on this item. Does anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and go back to our discussion. And I will begin by saying, the reason why I put this on the agenda was not to regulate free speech. It was to have consistency throughout the town with the way our sources or dispensaries of the newspapers are displayed. The reason why this was brought forth in 2011 was because there were a lot of unpermitted sources of news being distributed in the town. So, in other words, we require a permit to have them sell their papers in the town, which I think is perfectly fashionable and legal. And there were machines that were popping up in a lot of places, made out of plastic, made out of this, made out of that. And they were just thrown in the public right away, especially the downtown sidewalks. So, it was a priority or a concern to beautify the downtown and put those fancy machines in. And there was a lot of thought put into it. And each and every publication, I believe, was contacted at the time. And they were contacted to participate in a partial payment for the news rack. And at the time, I thought, "Well, why don't we just make this a town-wide, a town-wide ordinance, as opposed to just focusing on the downtown, because it affects areas of Los Gatos Boulevard? It will affect areas of the North Forty when it is put in, et cetera, et cetera." So, for me, as the vice mayor mentioned, what's black and white and red all over newspapers are not read all over so much. People get most of their sources of news on the internet. But I feel like if we do reach out to the publications and we said, "Okay, where would you like these? Where would you like to participate paying for those? And, you know, this will be where the sources will be," I think that we could put forth a little bit of effort to help beautify the town and declutter our sidewalks and make them more passable, as well as having printed stuff that people may or may not grab a handful of and just throw up in the air when they're running down the street. So, those were the ideas. It was more about the beautification and having the consistency throughout the town and consistency when we have new development come in to make it a more refined overall news rack ordinance. And again, it sounds like we have publications that are not even, in theory, authorized or permitted to sell in our community. So, that was the reasoning behind it. And I'm looking forward to hearing what my other council members feel on this subject. Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go back to staff. It's, what is it that a non-downtown news rack can do that a downtown one cannot do? Because I keep going back again to page 11 of the current ordinance, and it's not clear to me.
So, I'll start, and if Mr. Schultz has anything to add. Two things come to mind. One is, there are specific locations in the downtown that were designated, which is the Exhibit B that you're seeing. We don't have Exhibit B in the staff report, but it actually sets specific locations, so news racks could only go in those locations. And the second big one is getting to the mayor's point of, there are those brown racks and their specific design, and all of them are similar. And so, it would be making that a requirement outside where we don't have that requirement currently.
So, seeing no more discussion on this item, I'd look forward to a motion or direction from council. All right. Councilmember Sayoc.
Well, do you want a motion or do you want further direction?
Whatever you feel compelled to say.
Okay, so I'll give direction, and then I'll move towards a motion. I think the direction that I would like staff to consider as we look at future downtown improvements, I know we've looked at how do we free up more space for sidewalks? And if this is going to be a potential obstacle in providing more space, that perhaps this comes back at a future time? Otherwise, my motion is that we leave this news rack regulation as is until a problem comes back to us through the community that requires a change.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Passes four to one with the mayor dissenting. Moving on to item number 11. We have the introduction of the ordinance for the Town Code Regarding Horse-Drawn Carriages. Is this the town attorney? Okay, thank you. While we are waiting, if anybody wishes to speak on this item, I have no cards, so...
So, this item before you is one of your priorities back in January. It primarily deals with the fact that we do have an ordinance that regulates horse-drawn vehicles, horse-drawn carriages within the town. The only really organization that uses horse-drawn carriages is each time at Christmas time, the Chamber of Commerce does. Over the years, though, we really have not truly been following our ordinance. Last year, we really took a good look at it and found many items that needed to be clarified. And because of those items, we had to bring it to council as an agenda item. So, the idea was to bring it back to you with changes that would allow the town manager to make certain changes, if in fact, they were needed, to allow for the implementation of the ordinance. And I was going to look up the changes, but they're basically having to do with the number of horses. of horses. The previous ordinance did not allow for more than four passengers, it didn't allow for two horses. There were certain times that it could not use the horse-drawn carriages. So there were numerous items that would have to go to council and be approved by council, and through these ordinance changes, they can now be approved by the town manager.
All right, questions for staff? Vice Mayor.
Mr. Schultz, just in looking at it, the, basically, the one change that I did see was that it changed it to a discretionary decision by the town manager versus the council, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's basically the practice that had been going on for the past as many years as everybody's been here.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Seok.
So the changes that are proposed are fine, but the question I have is, do we even need to have the ordinance? If, would that simplify it, or the fact that it would be silent would cause more problems?
I think it's good there. There's many, many, many conditions in there that are important. In fact, last year, we did have a scenario where there was an issue, where there was a violation, and so it enabled us to say, you violated the permit condition. And so that does help us to have all the other ones in there.
All right, we will open the public hearing. I have no cards. We will close the public hearing and go to council for a motion. Vice Mayor.
I will move that we, what do we do? Approve, adopt the amended ordinance with respect to horse-drawn vehicles. And I would just point out, for the record, in sort of following up on Councilwoman Seok's question, there are provisions in the ordinance that I think are important, that have to do with the health and safety of the horse, and I think that we want to make sure that we are taking care of that, and that is actually in the ordinance. So, my motion is to adopt the ordinance as amended.
So it would be an introduction and first reading by title only?
And that too.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, none. Passes unanimously. Ms. Neese, can you read the title and ordinance?
An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Los Gatos, amending Chapter 28, Article 4 of the Los Gatos Town Code entitled Horse-Drawn Vehicles.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number 12. It's a Town Code Amendment, Considering the Zoning Regulations and the Land Use Appeal Process. Ms. Zarnowitz.
Thank you, Mayor and council. In 2018, the Policy Committee began discussion of amendments to the Town Code to streamline the land use appeals process, and that resulted in proposed amendments that would bifurcate the commercial and residential appeal processes, would remove the requirement to make one of three findings to reverse the decision of the Planning Commission, and would also provide for an appeal of a minor residential application. The Planning Commission reviewed this proposal in March of this year, and they supported bifurcating the residential and commercial land use appeals processes, and providing an appeal process for the minor residential applications. And they also recommended approval of the amendments, with the modification that the findings be retained, and that any new information that is provided be related to the same project that the Planning Commission saw, with no design changes. So, that really concludes staff's report. We're here to answer any questions, and we are recommending this evening that the council introduce the ordinance amendments with any specific changes by title only. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Couple of questions. I'm looking at the staff report, page two of four. But, the general question, I guess, is, I see the recommendations from the Planning Commission, and I just want to make sure that the ordinance that the council is considering is not incorporating those changes, that we have to determine whether we want to make those changes or not.
Right, and thank you for that question. There are two draft ordinances attached. Attachment one, Exhibit Six, would be the proposed amendments by the Policy Committee.
Okay.
Attachment four would be the specific changes as recommended by Planning Commission. So the changes recommended by Planning Commission are incorporated into the ordinance that they reviewed, but the Policy Committee amendments are also in there as Exhibit Six of Attachment one.
Thank you. Follow-up? The paragraph, what, it's called Interested Persons on page two, and it calls out and is proposing different distances for notification. I think I know what distance we use now, and I think I know what distance we use that is, we determine is, for example, a, what, statutory conflict? And this looks like it's using a thousand feet by the Political Reform Act. Is that what we have in our other ordinances, or is that a change?
So the Political Reform Act changed just in the last two months.
Okay.
And now there's a different, I'm doing a memo on it for you, but there's now, it's up to a thousand feet between under 500, there's a presumption, in between 500, there's another different presumption, and above, there's no presumption. So, to be perfectly safe, we wanted to use a thousand, and council's going to start to use a thousand feet also.
Okay, so if we adopt, whatever we adopt, we put the thousand feet in, we do that anticipation of whatever else needs to be changed? So they're all consistent? Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no further questions, we'll open up the public hearing on this item. I have no cards. Does anybody wish to speak? Now is your chance. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and go back to council for discussion and motions. Vice Mayor.
So, I'm going to start discussion, just because, member of the Policy Committee, and I hope the other Policy Committee member at the time will chime in. What we were trying to do is follow through on the council's priority to streamline processes, and one of the ways that we thought we could do that is to make some, I think, pretty minor changes to the appeal process, trying to avoid the circular council, Planning Commission, council, Planning Commission, council, Planning Commission, that's happened on a number of projects. And so, in order to do that, we were trying to provide some more discretion for the council, in order to be able to consider and make decisions. And, we were also trying to streamline as much as possible what came before the council as an appeal. So that's hence the bifurcation of the commercial and the residential, and hence the recommendation for the minor residential. We have a really good example of what happens with minor residential appeals from our proposed project 11 Peralta a couple of weeks ago. And that is an occasion where one person takes a project through multiple public hearings. So the idea was to try to streamline those processes as much as possible, so that we could have a more efficient, and, you know, hopefully a more, not just efficient, but I think that what we are recommending is actually fair as well, and provides a good balance between distances notified, projects that are subject to appeal, and giving discretion to the council to resolve those appeals when that's available. So that was at least my understanding of the source of the recommendation, and I hope Mr. Rennie will share his understanding.
Councilmember Rennie.
I really don't have anything else to add at this time. I think Councilman Jensen summed it up. I'll chime in, I guess, if there's any more discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Spector.
Thank you. With regard to Attachment four, does that have all of the Policy Committee's recommended changes, with the exception of the findings for an appeal from the Planning Commission, which is in 292300?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Further discussion, seeing none. How about a motion?
Well, I don't, I'm going to make a motion, but I don't see Attachment six in my packet, so I don't know where it is. My motion would be to, for the council to adopt the ordinance as recommended by the Policy Committee.
And that's Exhibit six of Attachment one?
Exhibit six, that's why I don't see it.
Yeah, it's attached to the Planning Commission.
Right. Attachment one, Exhibit six. That, that is recommended by the Policy Committee.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Mayor.
Councilmember Rennie.
So I'm willing to second it, and I would ask whether you wanted, the original one had 500 feet in it, whether you wanted to switch it to a thousand feet, as was being recommended.
Yes, thank you for that correction.
So I'll second it with the thousand-foot change.
Motion and a second. Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to commend the Planning Commission. The hearing that they had, and the transcript that we read, showed a significant amount of discussion, a significant amount of thought. I agreed with them, in the sense that I feel that, I feel that, the Planning Commission is our central land use deciding body, and our land use deciding mechanism are the decisions they make. I felt as though they were extremely articulate as to why they were making the recommendations that they were in Exhibit, well, it turns out to be our Exhibit four, and why they were not supporting the Policy Committee recommendation. And I agree with them. I think that if the issue that we're trying to address is the circular aspect of the appeals, and I agree, I don't like circular appeals. We had them last year. We probably had them on more than one item, but we definitely had them on Alberta Way. And the reason we have them was because the applicant would make a certain presentation to the Planning Commission, and then if the Planning Commission turned that applicant down, the applicant would appeal to the council at that point, thinking that they would have a better chance of being approved if they added a little bit, something or the other. And then they were looking for the Town Council to approve them. Then the Town Council had to decide whether do we approve them, even though there's additional information, or do we send them back to the Planning Commission, because that's what our ordinance provides. With all that in mind, the way that you eliminate that circular decision-making, and I feel as though it needs to be eliminated, is with the amendment to the ordinance that the Planning Commission sent forward to us. So, again, I thought that the Planning Commission did excellent work. I could point out every single one of them for something that he or she said, but I'll take Tom O'Donnell, because he's the one who very well described what was going on last year with the developer, the applicants, and coming up to the, and coming up to the Town Council from the Planning Commission. So I won't be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Seok.
Just wanted to make sure I understand, and so a question of staff, if I may. So with the addition that's in Attachment four, so with the current appeal process, there's three elements to it. No changes can be incorporated into the design if there is an appeal. That's how I'm understanding this change. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I guess it's the second finding.
So, the new information, and I was trying to think of other new information that could occur, if there's anything, perhaps like a substantial piece that was omitted from the discussion, however the design change doesn't, that still can be retained during the hearing?
That would be my understanding, unless the attorney has anything to add to that.
Okay. So just wanted to make sure. And so for that reason, I think I'm also not going to support the motion as is. I know, having served and watched the circular process that we've discussed numerous times, that seems to be the constant element, where the council and the commission have this gray area that causes the circular, and so I think it's just so much cleaner if we retain the language as in in Attachment four, so that it makes it absolutely clear that the design changes will not be looked at.
Thank you. Councilmember Rennie.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and add a little more what we were thinking about. I realize this, there's, it's kind of two sides of a scale here. The thing that I find frustrating all these times that these appeals came to the council is, with the findings that were there, I felt like we didn't have much discretion to make a decision, and we're supposed to be the ultimate deciding body. I feel like the direction the Planning Commission changes in Attachment four, feel like they yet limit what council can do even more. If something comes to us and we said, oh, well, no, that's a new decision, you know, there's even less that we can decide. I think that's been one of my frustrations, is, you know, we're supposed to be able to make the ultimate decision, but we're limited by, we've got to make these findings, which are really pretty narrow findings, and there's not many cities that have these kinds of findings that have to be made. In the Planning Commission minutes, you'll see that none in Santa Clara, but I think it was Commissioner Hudes looked up, or somebody, one of the commissioners found them in several other cities around the state. So that was one of my main concerns about the process as it is. I understand, though, we don't want to take authority away from the Planning Commission. We don't want people to just skip the Planning Commission. We want the decisions to be made at the Planning Commission as much as possible, and I know that potentially taking the requirements for these findings away might make people think, oh, well, we, you know, can just skip the Planning Commission and go to the, you know, or ignore what the Planning Commission said and go to the council. So I understand that could be happening, but in my mind, it's about, you know, letting us make a decision. I had originally thought about adding a fourth finding that gave us a little more ability to make some decisions when it comes to council, and I think with Policy Committee, we ultimately decided to get rid of it, the three findings to simplify it. The other issue I have is, if the Planning Commission denies a project, and then the developer comes up with some new ideas for, you know, changes to the project that might work, you know, again, you know, we've said we want the developer to give us their best shot, but sometimes the best shot doesn't have all the best in it until they've gone through the process of the discussion at the Planning Commission. One of the concerns is if they don't have, if they don't have a good reason to come to the council, then they're ended, they end up having to start the whole application process over. So let's say, Planning Commission really said, well, if it was different, and the applicant said, okay, well, yeah, I could, think I could go make some changes, but if it's denied by the Planning Commission, they have to start the whole process over, versus coming to council with the new ideas. I realize, the whole process is not perfect, and I don't think we've found necessarily the right answer, but I'm not sure, taking away even more opportunity for council to make decisions is the right way to go either. I'm not sure how helpful that was, but...
Vice Mayor.
I just want to echo what Councilwoman Rennie said. The difficulty I have with saying that if you appeal, you can change nothing, is that you've stopped the process at the Planning Commission, basically. And the council are the elected representatives of the residents of the town, and theoretically, we are entrusted to try to do the right thing, and that may be to have the discretion to reach some kind of compromise. Now, let's say you leave it as the Planning Commission recommends, a design gets turned down, you can't change the design, you come to the council, and the only option the council has is to say yes or no on the appeal. Okay, the developer still thinks he has a decent idea, so what happens then? You've just changed the circle. You've stopped it, they go start over again. You've stopped it, they go start over again. So, if the council doesn't have the opportunity to consider a new idea, okay, we heard the Planning Commission, those were great ideas, we listened to all of the residents, you know, that was great, we really need to incorporate this to make our project better. Now, if we adopt what the Planning Commission has suggested, we, the council can't consider that, and the developer can't come back and respond to those things that they heard at the Planning Commission. So I think that we have to remember, I mean, and I'm a former Planning Commissioner, and I respect them as much as anybody up here, because I know how much work they do, and I know that it can be sometimes frustrating, but they are an advisory body appointed by the council, and it's up to the council to ultimately make the decision. So if you don't give the council the opportunity to get the benefit of some new idea, then you've just cut it off, cost everybody, you know, a lot of money, the developer to go back file again, the citizens who don't like it to go back file an appeal again, to organize. So you could either have it go round, around, and round, and round, or you could have it go, stop, appeal, stop, go back, stop, stop. So, just for a matter of streamlining how this process works, if we can somehow provide an avenue that a developer, or a resident, or whoever it might be, can respond to what happened at the Planning Commission, and then the council can respond to what happened at the Planning Commission, I think we get a better process. So I would... So I would argue that that's why we should not adopt that basically stop that the Planning Commission has asked us to adopt.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appear at the council. We on land use handle appeals. It is indeed the Planning Commission that makes the decision on these applications. We know from our knowledge, our council knowledge of what goes on in the Planning Commission, that there have been many times on a regular basis that the applicant before the Planning Commission brings up ideas. And the Planning Commission then gives the opportunity to that applicant to go back, do whatever it is the applicant wants to do, and then come back before the Planning Commission. So the opportunity to have variations, to make modifications, can indeed happen at the Planning Commission level and, in fact, happens at the Planning Commission level in a very regular basis. We are not the ultimate deciding body in the applications for land use, except for the fact of appeals. That's when we become the ultimate deciding body.
Vice Mayor.
So the lawyers here are going to have a nice, very polite debate. Yes, you can go back to the Planning, you can be at the Planning Commission and have your idea considered, and that happens plenty. And sometimes it's productive, sometimes it's not. You may have a developer who's entrenched. You may have opponents who are entrenched. And it may be that you have to now go to the council to ultimately get that decided. So I would argue that, okay, you can make changes and respond at the Planning Commission. And let's say you have four Planning Commission meetings, and you make changes, make changes, make changes. And now let's hypothetically say the Planning Commission turns you down. So now you've come back with your four changes. You can't go back to a previous iteration. Now you're stuck with what your last one was that got turned down. You can't change the design. And now you've just extended a process that could, in theory, result in stopping and starting again with something different. So I do think, and I would beg to differ, that the council, Planning Commission is certainly the ultimate decision maker on certain land use issues, but on others, they are, provide a recommendation. CUPs, plan developments, whatever it may be. So it's not always the case that it only comes to the council as an appeal. And I'm not here to strip anyone of their power. What I'm trying to do is say, well, how can we make this work best for everybody who's involved in the process? And to me, if you erect some kind of barrier to that occurring, then I don't think it serves anyone very well.
I will weigh in. I thought about this a long time ago. As were mentioned, we do get these projects that seem to volley back and forth between Planning Commission and council, and then the appeal, et cetera, et cetera. And I thought that if somebody files an appeal, and then in between, they come and they add a bunch of new information or change a few things, and then they say to the council, well, the Planning Commission said no, but I'm providing you new information in one of the categories. One of the three bullets is if someone brings new information that the Planning Commission didn't see, then the council can overrule the Planning Commission. I thought maybe one way to address this, and then the council would hear it and say, okay, well, we'll make a decision. And sometimes it goes back and forth. Perhaps a good way to address this would be if somebody were to file an appeal, their appeal would not go to council. It would go back to the Planning Commission. So they would appeal the Planning Commission's decline or denial. And then if they wanted to add new information, the Planning Commission would hear it one more time. And then after that time, if the Planning Commission still declined, then they could appeal it for council for one shot, and that's where the ball, whatever, that's where the ball stops. That's where the whole thing would stop, as opposed to it going back and forth and back and forth. I think it's more a matter, you know, the great points brought up here, but I think it's more of a matter of the process itself. Not that there's anything wrong with what we're doing. It seems like it's worked for a number of years. There can be made improvements that were mentioned. That's also good. But I always thought of it as, in terms of if you're going to appeal a denial, you should appeal it to the body that made the denial and go back to them and try to satisfy them before going to an entirely different body, which is the council, and then throwing a bunch of new information and trying to push it through. And sometimes that has worked in the past. Sometimes it hasn't. But to avoid the whole volley and to speed up that process, especially on the big projects or the controversial projects, most of our projects, I would say 999% of them are always, we don't have issues with it. You know, it has to go to Planning Commission. It gets a unanimous approval or whatever. An approval, it comes to council, unanimous approval. It's just the ones that are appealed that are the political footballs that go back and forth. And I think a way to avoid that and to streamline the process is to make the appeal, go back to the Planning Commission. If there's new information based on the Planning Commission's recommendations, then they can hear it again. And then if the applicant was still not satisfied, or if it was appealed after that to the council, then the council would have the final decision at that point.
Vice Mayor.
So, Mr. Mayor, with respect, I'm going to argue, politely debate why I think that that model doesn't work. He's a sports model. If I get suspended by the commissioner of the NFL, my appeal is to the commissioner of the NFL. The likelihood of him saying, oh, I was wrong and I'm going to change my mind, is slim and none, although sometimes it happens. So sending an appeal back to the same body that made the decision normally doesn't happen, you know, in a legal process. What you're describing is a continuance. The Planning Commission says, I don't like it. I'm going to turn it down. I want to see you do bloody blah, blah, blah. I think the planning commissioners here who have done this, one of the factors that the staff points out or the planning commissioners think about is if I tell you to lower the roof by two feet, and you come back and you don't lower the roof, and I say, why didn't you lower the roof? And, you know, you get points off for that. So really, it's not an appeal. They're not hearing it all over again. You know, you're saying, okay, I want to continue it, and you guys do what I'm going to tell you to do. Now, they may have legitimate reasons to do it and not to do it. But the nature of the appeal is that it goes through a different body to look at the same evidence and decide whether or not they want to make the same decision. So I would say, if you're talking about making them go to the Planning Commission again, you've kind of delayed their right to appeal. Because really, what you're asking them to do is change something in response to what the Planning Commission has done.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I do, I have thought of that, and I do respect what you said. And of course, the continuance or the continuation of a Planning Commission hearing is always an option for them. I just thought that in the event, it always seems to me, our choices are, did the Planning Commission err or abuse? And I'm going on nine full years up here, but in all my time up here, we never seem to find the Planning Commission as error or erring or abusing their authority. The point is, the new information, when the applicant comes back and, you know, they got their Planning Commission denial, they accuse the Planning Commission of error and abuse, and they come to us and they say, well, I've reduced the size of the building, I've lowered the roof and did all this stuff. To avoid that scenario, that could potentially be handled at the Planning Commission level before it comes to the council level, because they're trying to game the council as being, you know, presenting the new information because we have just those three bullets, that's the part that I think, make them go back to the Planning Commission if they're going to do that, and hear it one more time. And if they're still not satisfied, then come to the council. So that was my thinking. I'm looking forward to more discussion on this and/or a vote. Does anybody else wish to speak? Mr. Rennie.
Thank you. So I think you're going to end up with more ping pong. If you remove the ability to bring new information to the council, and, you know, maybe this is a debate over whether you think council's supposed, you know, the elected officials are the ones that make the decision over people's property, you know, their dreams and so forth, or the appointees of the council make that decision. But the issue, I think, if you remove the idea that we can't look at new information, council, what I've observed of this group is, we always look at all the issues. We look at the neighbors' concerns. We look at the applicants, what they want. And we always think, okay, how do we come up with a better compromise than what came to us? Well, that's often something new, something needs to change. So what the council will say is, well, we can't actually approve this, but we could send it back to Planning Commission because we think you could change this, this, and this, but we know you couldn't bring it to us. So we're going to ping pong, I think, even more if you go that direction versus just sitting down and finally solving it. Many of the ones we've concerned about have gone back and forth within the Planning Commission where they continued it several times, asked for changes, they got some of the changes, you know, the applicant couldn't do some of them, they went back, they continued it again. And then ultimately, you need to stop even the circling in the Planning Commission and get a final decision at council. And so, again, my concern is if you don't give the council the tools to resolve it, you're just going to cause the ping pong to increase, not decrease.
With respect to comments that were just made, I think the council still would have that discretion that we have now. There would just be, it would go back to the Planning Commission with the one appeal to the council after the Planning Commission heard the appeal of their own denial. The real issue is this. The applicants can speak to council members and communicate with council members and lobby council members. Planning commissioners are not allowed to speak to the applicants. So it puts them in a different, obviously, they are in a different role, but in a different position than us. And I think it would end the volley quicker in some instances. So again, this is not a perfect process that we have, and there's strong or compelling arguments to both sides of this debate here. We're trying to improve a process and trying to streamline the process. But I think as the process is written now, someone can appeal the Planning Commission, it could go to council, it could go back to Planning Commission, then it could go back to council, and it could go back to Planning Commission. There's no limitation. It can go back and forth 10 times. And to me, I think that's where the frustration lies. I think that if you set the ground rules up front and you say, okay, you can appeal the Planning Commission's denial, but then you have to go back to the Planning Commission. If you're still not satisfied, then you get one shot to go to council, and that's it. And the council still has the authority they have now to look for the quote-unquote error and abuse, or the items that were the discretion outside of the Planning Commission's purview, or the new information. Those are the three bullet points. But I think it would encourage the applicants to resolve the issues at the lower level, really listen to the Planning Commission and to their feedback and to their input, and try to get the project designed better at a lower level in the Planning Commission, as opposed to, I heard it so many times in this business, it coming to the council and the design from the dais type of thing. It comes to us and someone throws some new information out and say, okay, lower the roof this and do this and this, and then we'll send it through. I think ultimately, we'd still have that authority, but I think there would be less pressure to, how could I say it, have applicants want to bring forth a project and potentially wish to bypass the Planning Commission with something that's controversial.
Vice Mayor.
Just a question for Mr. Schultz. As a legal matter, can an appeal be made to the body that has, that you've just received a decision from?
You could write that into an ordinance if you wanted to. And if it's denial, you have to go back for another hearing, a reconsideration of that hearing before it would go to the council. I've never seen it before. And just a couple other items. I mean, I'm sitting here, 30 years of experience, I've reached over 1,000 meetings now of council meetings and Planning Commission meetings. And I wasn't at the Planning Commission for the hearing before that, but I've read the transcript. And we are the only town where you'll find where you have to pass a resolution to make these specific findings. Although there was mentions of ordinances that talk about error and abuse. That's all they say is error and abuse. Anywhere else, council has the complete authority under the error and abuse to say, we disagree with you, it was therefore an error, and we're going to change it. Here, it's been a completely different process. We have held that to a standard, a court standard, that in order to do the error and abuse, it has to be arbitrary, it has to be completely outrageous, it has to be this high standard that is nowhere else within the entire state. You are the elected officials. The decisions are supposed to be made by you. So that's why the changes, at least I believe, either you need to define error and abuse, because it's been used both ways, where you'll say, well, we have to uphold this because of the high standard. But then when I don't think they did it right, well, it's just an error. I get to make the decision. And I think that's been the problem with applicants not knowing when they're going to file appeal, what is the standard you're holding it to. So since I've gotten here, I've wanted at least to find error and abuse as the number one tool, so that everybody's on the same plane view.
So in response to that, again, been up here for a while, and we've never found the Planning Commission guilty of error and abuse, even. We have? I don't recall. But that seems to always be what the appeal is filed as. But what the town attorney just said is, it would best be to help define what error and abuse is.
Councilmember Seac.
So I'm going to ask our town attorney and staff. So I'm looking at the three criteria. And also, just to clarify, we have made certain appeal decisions where, I don't know if it's error, I doubt it's abuse, but we have said in error. And specific examples that come to mind, there've been disagreements over the 225 design guidelines, whether or not a modern home could be included, whether or not county land should be counted. So I'm looking at the different criteria, one and three. I mean, those are clearly policy decisions that we disagreed with the Planning Commission. If you, if this, if what is approved, if what is in front of us is approved, I mean, do we, we still have that discretion under criteria three to just say we disagree with the interpretation of the design? Is that correct? Or?
But that has not been the unspoken rule or even the debate by council, is that no, it has to be, an error and abuse means that high standards of an appellate court, which means it has to be completely absurd, completely arbitrary, and a plain error, as opposed to, I just disagree. And that's where the 225, we've done it on that one. We've done it on the Bella Vista. I can name, you know, other ones for you that we've done it, where we've just said, okay, we disagree. But most of the time, council has been consistent and wrestled with this idea every single appeal as to whether it should be a plain error, abusive error, or just a disagreement.
Okay. So again, given what we have in front of us, the disagreement in policy interpretation, could that fall within the criteria that is in the draft? Or does that now have to be redefined so that error, abuse, or disagreement?
Policy Committee found that it was better to just take it out, and therefore, they could overrule the Planning Commission for whatever reason that they found. With this language now, I believe, as Councilmember Rennie has stated, it ties your hands even further to where staff would have to inform a applicant that wanted to make any changes, you just can't. It's not even possible for the council to determine whether there's new information with a design change. So it is tying your hands further. But certainly still, if this language stays as it is with the Planning Commission's changes, you still have the ability for any one of the council members to say, I find an error. I don't believe your definition of error is this plain error, or this abusive discretion is this higher standard, because it doesn't say that anywhere, and therefore, I don't have to follow your definition of error and abuse. My error is different. And same with a policy under number three.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
Just to make sure, but with the Planning Commission draft, if we found error or abuse, our only option is to grant the appeal, but we cannot consider any changes to the denial that came before. So even though the council may have ideas about what could improve the project, or the developer may have ideas about what could improve the project, we are not able to do that under the draft we've gotten from the Planning Commission, correct?
Unless you made another finding that they were not readily and reasonably available for submission to the commission. So there's another
Right.
... very vague way to go either way on. very vague way to go either way on that.
I'm going to, I'm sorry. Just looking at the second of my motion, I'm now sitting here considering, well, I'll just leave it aside, we'll see what happens.
Councilmember Seok.
I just want to make sure I understand, to follow up on the vice mayor's. So, and again, I understand that these are hypotheticals, but let's say we have an appeal, we disagree with the Planning Commission decision for whatever reason. Let's say it's a 225. And there are changes that we are going to ask of the applicant. They didn't change their design changes, but we're going to ask them of it, that's not allowed?
That would be subject to interpretation. A councilmember could say, well, you're making changes to your project right here, now it has to go back to council, now it has to go back to Planning Commission.
But why? Because if you look at C, you've now struck out that it has to go to Planning Commission. So that reduces the ping-
But there's new information that's going to be provided that you're now going to incorporate into their design as opposed to three, which is an issue of policy over the commission did not have discretion. So the new information that you developed on the dais to change the project to make it okay with the council and with the applicant, the interpretation could be, well, since we now have new information, we have to go back to Planning Commission. And I think that's what councilmember Rennie said, it could tie your hands even further.
But if you strike out C, so if you keep reading further, you're no longer required to send things back to the Planning Commission if there's new information?
Right, but how does two play into that, the changes to two? You can't hear new design information changes.
Even if the council, okay.
A question for Mr. Schultz.
Vice Mayor.
With the Planning Commission changes, if the developer, or whoever it might be, the homeowner, let's just say homeowner so it's not as fraught, comes and says, I've got some great ideas at Planning Commission, but, and I'll tell you about them, but I can't show you a picture, I can't, so I can't show you a drawing, you can't consider it. All you can do is say up or down. No matter what happens, the council cannot resolve that question, it has to go back to the Planning Commission. Is that right, under the Planning Commission recommendation? Right?
You can't, I mean, to me, the way it's written is you wouldn't be able to hear new design changes. That's the way I interpret it.
Me too.
I'll make a general comment here and then we'll call the question if nobody wants to speak. I find this fascinating that nobody from the development community or anybody spoke on this matter this evening, considering this is very important to them. And I will go ahead and we will call the vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. So can we have the noes raise their hand? So the motion fails, three, two, two. Vice Mayor.
I have a new motion. My motion is that we send this back to the Policy Committee yet again because there's been enough questions raised about how this will work that clearly, it's not in a position to be voted on.
If I may make a suggestion, because there are many good points. This was the only 29-20300 is that you accept all the other changes except that section's changes and we can go on to second reading and then send that specific decision-making back to Policy Committee for more work, if that's acceptable of a suggestion instead of sending everything back to Planning-
I'm sure I understand what that section that you want me to exempt is.
Section 2920-300, which is the decision section that we've been talking about. I don't think there was any other comments about all the other changes that would streamline other appeals and other decisions that Planning Commission had agreed on and I think council is in agreement on. So we could send that on to second reading and then subtract, leave that section as is.
Okay, so moved.
All right, so we have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Councilmember Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. So let me, again, suggest, you know, what I was trying to do last time we talked about it at Policy Committee, which I won't be at now. But, so I'll reinject the idea. So it's, it doesn't seem like council wants to get rid of the requirements for findings. So I would request that you think about a fourth finding that, again, gives council some more opportunities to solve the problems. I feel like it's our job to resolve this, not, you know, create an ordinance that says, sorry, we can't consider it. That's what it feels like we're heading further and further towards. Let's do our job, we're the elected officials.
All right, comments for the record, further discussion, seen none. I'll call the question, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you, everybody, for that one. We'll move on to item number 13, which is the one-way downtown street project on North Santa Cruz Avenue between Bachman and Elm.
And the clerk needs to read the title.
Thank you. If you may.
An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of LaScata submitting Chapter 29 zoning regulations of the Town Code regarding the land use appeal process.
Thank you. All right, now we will move on to item number 13, which is the one-way downtown street project. Mr. Morley.
Thank you, good evening. Last time when we were here in January, we talked about the concept of the one-way street pilot. Tonight, we're bringing you plans and specifications that we're looking for approval on and I thought I'd talk you through what we're thinking about along the way in a little more detail so you could see what this looks like. Momentarily. So the format is the southbound North Santa Cruz Avenue will be one-way from Bachman to Elm. There'll be angled parking on the east side with parallel parking on the west side for a net gain through the project of three parking spaces, which is a nice little outcome. And that includes accounting for the parklets and will have seven casual gathering places of parklets that we'll install with street furniture and wrapped K-rail for protection. So really informal and sort of fun and lively in colors and open and available for folks to use. So with that in mind, we'll move through sort of section by section of the plans that we provided for you with the memo. On this one, just to get your bearing, Highway 9 is on sort of my right side of the screen and Bachman is on the top. These zoom in so that they're a little bit easier to read. So this is that same sheet. You can see that we'll have a bike lane as you're headed past Bachman that parallels the lane of travel headed south. In this picture, you can see the angled parking nicely. The purple boxes are the parklets. So there'll be a parklet at that location with parallel parking on that side adjacent to the parklets. The, we'll move, continue to move south. And so this, again, is a bigger section on the next sheet and we cover three additional streets in this one. So starting from the northernmost part of this sheet, you can see a couple of additions here. So we'll be doing, in the green circles, some right and left turn arrows to help with traffic and that will be balanced with some street signage that will also help traffic to know which way to turn when they approach Santa Cruz. Again, the bike lane continues, you see another parklet there and the angled parking. As we move down towards Gray's Lane, when we do a parklet on the angled parking side, the parklets become a little bit more deep. So there's a little bit extra space there. So that'll be a nice experience to see what those look like. And again, we continue with the pavement markings to help with the directions. Moving down a little bit further to Nicholson and Royce, pretty much the same thing, another parklet there, angled parking, accommodating for the streets. So there's some extra painted areas to allow for turns and to keep folks safe going in and out of driveways. And then the final section. Ended up with the wrong map. As we go further down the street, we'll end up with, just as we pass the end of the closure at Elm Street, we will have two additional parklets where the traffic goes back to two-way streets. So we'll help with identifying what our parklets will start to look like even through our installed parklets that we do over the course of permitted installations and what that does for traffic calming. Couple of points for your consideration. And as you know, we're stopping at Elm, that's intended to help the traffic at Main Street to flow into the downtown and also to avoid creating significant congestion at University and Main Street, which we're a little bit worried about the capacity of that intersection. So this should help the balance of that. Sorry, my PowerPoint was not where I wanted it to be. We'll also, from a timing perspective, we're anticipating starting in July. So we look at a July 9th start for the installation. That will give us, we're hoping to do this fairly quickly, so it'll be a quick turnover in the installation. The installation looks like us coming in one night and grinding off markings one night and starting the striping. We'll have temporary markings in for the next business day and then the next night, we'll come back in and finish striping with the third day being any touch-ups that we need to do, some of the directional arrows, and then the K-rail and the parklets going in on that third day. So it'll be three nights of work, hopefully not disturbing the businesses too much during the day. We still do need to bid this, so there'll be some work with the contractor along the way to finalize all of that schedule. We are looking for a couple, we do have a couple recommendations for your consideration tonight. One is to approve the plans and specifications so that we can go out to bid, authorize the town manager at the same time to award the bid within the budget amount with a 15% contingency should we see any unexpected changes that we need to make. And then a budget adjustment for about $108,000 to accommodate what we estimate to be higher costs associated with the project. We do anticipate doing a significant amount of community outreach during the course of the, leading up to the pilot so that folks are well aware of that. That actually started last week with a meeting with the business community to introduce it to them. And that will ramp up should you approve us moving forward this evening. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Morley. Councilmember Seok.
Mr. Morley, thank you. Could you just walk us through some more of the community outreach that you and your staff are hoping to do as July approaches? And specifically, how you get the information out to those that are not in the immediate downtown area?
So for the LaScata's focused outreach, we'll do our typical next-door posts. We have a website that we've set up that will handle the parking, the one-way pilot specifically and the downtown in general with inexperienced LaScatas. So we've done a lot of effort toward branding the downtown experience this summer. And so that'll be a sort of a one-stop web link on our website that will talk about what's going on in the downtown or in LaScatas this summer. So that'll be a nice resource for folks. We'll do press releases, we'll reach out to the navigation apps and let them know what we're doing, so it will be included in those MAMS. So a whole myriad of outreach efforts to make sure that we get as broad a reach as we possibly can.
Councilmember Rennie.
Probably a simple question. It says you're putting in seven parklets, but I can only count five boxes you have there. Are some of them two and one?
So there are seven, I can go over the locations. My sheets here. So the, headed, so I'm going to switch directions here and start at the south end on you. Headed from the south at Restoration Hardware, there's a parklet there and across the street, so that's two. Moving up the street towards Farmica, there is one on that side of the street and then right across the street there at Black Cat Hats. So that would be your four.
So those aren't all marked on these diagrams or were just hard to find?
Uh, there-
So the first page, you said, starting at the south, I only see one on the west side of the street. And you said there's another one across the street?
Yeah, so it looks like on the diagram that you have the two that are across, the one at Restoration Hardware and the one immediately across the street, sort of at Redemption or where OPA was, are not showing on your diagram, but there are two parklets there.
Okay, and that probably solves the problem then.
So that brings your five to seven.
Thanks.
All right. Opening up the public hearing, Matthew Hudeas. If you want to speak on this subject, just have one card, so bring your cards forward.
Thank you. I was obviously here for another reason, but I had some suggestions to offer on this one-way pilot and wanted to suggest that, you know, the ultimate community outreach on this is going to be when people can't make a right turn or have to go around the block and that's when they're going to realize what's going on. And so there, I suspect there will be a fair amount of controversy about the pilot. So my suggestion is to upfront establish criteria for success for the pilot. You know, why are we doing this? And what would, when we get done with it, how will we know whether we've succeeded or not? So perhaps measuring the traffic or measuring the positive impact on business in downtown or looking at potentially the parking becoming easier or less. So I would just suggest that Parks and Public Works work with Town Vitality Manager and the Chamber to establish some criteria upfront so that it can be evaluated when it's done. The other question was, and again, I haven't paid a lot of attention to this, but it's not clear whether or how a southbound flow will help with the gridlock traffic situation that we get in the summer. In fact, I'm wondering if it might actually make it worse by directing traffic in that direction where northbound might resist traffic flow going that way. But again, I haven't looked at it closely, just wanted to raise that question, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is the last card on this subject, so I will close the public hearing and move on to council for discussion and/or a motion. Councilmember Rennie.
I think that was a good point and I think I've kind of thought of it, but do you have criteria in mind? I mean, I think we're all looking to see, you know, are there negative effects from, you know, the traffic on the Almond Grove and other places? I think we're expecting people to have to get used to it. So there'll be some grumbling until they get used to it. Hopefully, it's going long enough that they're used to it. But I guess the real question is, you know, what are our criteria? We all, I don't know if we've verbalized them. I'm thinking if, you know, more people are enjoying coming downtown, more people are sitting outside, or, you know, if there's more business going on, that seems to be one of them. But has staff come up, thought at all on this?
So we have a couple areas, a couple of hotspots that we're concerned about. So we're concerned about heavier traffic in residential areas. So we'll definitely be doing measurements there. We'll do traffic counts to see some before and after force on those. We're worried about congestion at several intersections, so we'll be watching those to see what happens and we'll be making adjustments to traffic signal timing along the way to see if we can help to smooth that out. We'll definitely be looking at the popularity of the parklets to see how much they get used and what seems to work there, who's using them, how are they using them, that kind of a thing. So some of those are easily quantifiable, some of them are a little bit more, you know, less-
So success on the negative side, the negative things you mentioned, success is you were, found a way to mitigate them or they didn't occur. That would be a measure of success for those?
Absolutely. So as I said, we're looking at the hotspots, the areas that we're worried about and if we can manage those or keep them from happening, then I think that starts to become success. So if there's not a residential impact, then that's a success. If the businesses at the end of the summer feel that it was beneficial to them, then that would be a success. Those are the elements that I think that are important.
Thank you.
Councilmember- Councilmember Seok.
So to follow up on that is, do you happen to know, and I looked at Ms. Pravetti, is Ms. Ren working with the Chamber for what a survey before and after would look like so that we have that input from our businesses downtown?
We are working on that now.
Vice Mayor.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, bearing in mind that this is a pilot, so the purpose of the pilot is to figure out what works, what doesn't work, and the metrics that have been mentioned tonight are all good ones, and I'm sure that the town staff is going to bear in mind all the discussions that the council has and work with the Chamber, businesses and residents to see how this works. So with that in mind, I'd like to move to approve the plans and specifications for the one-way downtown street pilot project and authorize the town manager to advertise the project for bid and authorize the budget changes and authorizations that are contained in the first page of our staff report.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None, it passes unanimously. So move on to council matters. Councilmember Seok.
The only thing I want to share with council, with other council, is that we are heavy in legislative season, so if there are any legislative issues that, and bills specifically on the housing that are of interest, I know Ms. Pravetti has been getting updates on those, and she'll be able to forward any additional questions to either the League of Cities or to Cities Association.
Thank you. Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The General Plan Advisory Committee met and drafted a vision statement. The West Valley, West Valley Water Authority Board met, and I wouldn't say there's anything significant to report out, although we did have a consent item on Agenda Item 8, which would be the most significant thing. The Solid Waste Management Board actually did have an interesting issue. There was a recommendation by staff to increase one of the reserve accounts, which would have resulted in a slight increase to the rates for our residents. That was unanimously voted down. However, we must all keep in mind that with the changes now in the recycling, as we have been reading about it in China and other locations, should that all go forward as it is now, we could anticipate that the cost for our solid waste will increase this coming year and will therefore increase the cost to our residents.
Thank you. Since our last regularly scheduled meeting, I attended the West Valley Mayor's and Managers' Meeting, and we had representatives from the VTA speak, including Councilmember Rennie, and I'm sure he can tell us what we talked about when he provides his comments. Also on, we went to Burlingame, the town manager, the Economic Development Department Director, the Chamber of Commerce, and myself for a field trip when we met with their Public Works Director, and we covered some of the things that they've done in the recent past in their city to beautify their downtown, as well as many other points regarding how they handle their planning processes and many, many questions. And perhaps the town manager can provide more input on that. She sent us all an email. I hosted some representatives from Japan, from the U.S.-Japan Forum, our local representative, Yuji Iri. We welcomed a dentist and his wife who had interests in local Los Gatos dentistry history. We have a famous Japanese dentist, who's actually the first Japanese dentist in the United States, was, lived in Los Gatos and provided many breakthroughs in dentistry in the 1864 through 1868 period, went on to become a dentist for three emperors in Japan. So we have some interesting history, and they exchanged some letters that he had drafted from when he lived in Los Gatos and sent them over to Hitayoshi, Japan. So it was very awesome. And there's one more thing, and I can't remember what it is. Vice Mayor.
I also attended the General Plan Advisory Committee along with Councilwoman Spector, and thank you, Ms. Pravetti, for the report that we got on the field trip to Burlingame where I noted that the business improvement district was quite necessary to accomplishing what they did.
Councilmember Rennie.
Thank you. I attended the Best in the West SWAT competition at the Sheriff's Range. I got an invitation to that. The mayor may have gone, I think he was planning to. Was very interesting to watch the different activities. There was, they're obviously shooting and kind of simulating a breaking into a saloon and shoot and not shoot targets, and then they had stamina competition. It was all very interesting. Last night, I attended the, we call the Hack-a-Dak. It's the Housing and Community Development Advisory Committee for the, to the supervisors, and Los Gatos had applied for a grant to work on our senior rec center. Basically, these are dollars, federal dollars that come through the community block grant program, and the recommendation from staff was upheld by the committee, and the recommendation was to not, not give Los Gatos our grant money. The main reason was it was kind of the last item on the list. In other, in other words, if more money comes available, you never quite know how much money's going to come through on these block grants. Los Gatos is next on the priority list to get money for that, but the, you know, I certainly asked the questions, why it was not being recommended, and the key thing is the county needs to have the money spent by April of the year it's planned for, and we had our construction not getting, our design not done till August, so they wanted to see design done by July, so then they made sure it was spent by April, and we may not be aware of these needs, so if we keep this in mind for future applications that, you know, keep in mind that they need the money spent by April, so our plans should show us making that, and we would have had a better chance of getting money for that. I think the extra money ended up getting allocated into building, what's it called? Building next door, no. I'm forgetting now, the organization, it wasn't top of my brain, the organization that goes out and helps people fix up their houses, so there was some extra money put into that instead. No, it's not Habitat, it's, too many of these running through my brain all of a sudden. So I also, the VTA Board met, and the key thing was we passed the next network transit plan, which was also one of the key things that we talked about at the West Valley Mayor's Meeting. I brought the main planner along to the West Valley Mayor's Meeting to help all of the West Valley Mayors understand what are the changes in, in our area, and we actually, I think, do, doing quite well. There are changes, but in a lot of ways, service is improving. There's some, some routes may have got less frequent, but others got more frequent, so it was, it was ways to change the network, and I don't think it negatively impacted us. The Board did, and, and we went, the Board process was we started off with a proposed, and we went through a lot of discussion with the community and the subcommittees of the Board, and they came up with a final draft, and the staff did a really good job of solving most of the major concerns. VA Hospital wasn't having a route, so they managed to find ways to change routes without costing more money. Basically, they had a box that the Boardhead said, you know, "We can't spend more than this much money," and in fact, we had gone through a process where they had created the, a new network to match up with the new BART stations, and then we found we had a $20 million budget shortfall, and we had to reduce hours from that. So this was the next time through of, okay, how do we reduce some service hours to save money? The two places that the Board felt weren't, didn't get solved, and maybe they could do a little more, was there's a bus route 17, and then near us, there's a bus route 54 that runs down Lee Avenue that were being canceled, so we asked staff to look into first-mile, last-mile kinds of solutions, particularly those on Lee. There's some, some community in that area that are not as mobile, seniors or disabled and so forth, so we asked them to, to, we passed the plan, but asked them to look for first-mile, last-mile, so maybe a 40-foot bus isn't the solution for that street, but other, other, other solutions that maybe can get those people connected into the system. I also had my quarterly one-on-one with the VTA General Manager on 4/30. Ribbon cuttings, I did a ribbon cutting at Interactive Medicine on Los Gatos Albino across from the California Cafe there, just about, also with the mayor, did ribbon cutting with the Wine Cellar. And I also, on 4/18, spoke at the Saratoga High School Green Team Event for Earth Day. They, they had three speakers come in, and the town manager assisted me on this one. We, the town manager and I's topic basically was, you know, what can government do to help the environment? So we, you know, I did a talk and had the town manager add some things at the end of the talk, and then we facilitated, it's, you know, we broke into three groups and we facilitated discussion group where the town manager and I were facilitating one of those on some of the topics, so that was interesting. I guess that's my list.
Thank you, Mr. Rennie, and you jogged my memory. I have three more things. I also attended the Best in the West competition. Fantastic display of law enforcement and the capabilities they, they're capable of doing to protect us. Met with State Senator Jim Bell regarding a grant for the Highway 17 Improvement Project, as well as meeting with the school principal and superintendent, and we discussed some potential improvements to the safety in the community, the school community. Town manager?
Thank you. Just picking up on what the mayor was saying about the Japanese delegation, there were some wonderful historical artifacts, including letters written in Japanese from the dentist, and so those items are now being archived at our town library in the history collection, and they're absolutely fascinating, including a book that has old historic photographs of the town, so it's, it's really a treasure. It is in Japanese, but I think it just adds to the richness of the culture of our community. And then finally, we are continuing our recruitment for our adult commissions. Applications are due on June 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.